And we are recording. The meeting is yours, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. This meeting will now come to water at 6:00 P. M. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Anne Dixon.
Here.
Jennifer Ludwig.
Here.
James LeBlanc.
Here.
And Kimberly Shockley.
Here.
Thank you. I've invited Mr. Craig Levis, Superintendent of the Coventry Public Schools, and Mrs. Catherine Patno, Chairperson of the School Committee, to join us to answer any questions the council may have. Welcome to the members of the community who have joined us via Zoom. Mr. Wazika, how many are on the call with us this evening?
At this point, twenty-nine, twenty-nine.
Well, welcome to all who have joined us. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Thank you. Agenda item A four, the meeting minutes have been distributed. Are there any corrections? Okay, if none, then the minutes are approved. Thank you. We'll now move to agenda item B one. This is the process that we'll follow. We'll just review it. I will ask Mr. Wazika to present his recommended budget. I will make a motion to approve the budget recommendation. I'll ask for your second to get the motion on the table, and then we'll open it up for discussion by the council. Do I have any objections from any members of the council to move agenda item C, public comment, to a position before the council vote in B two? We are in agreement to that?
I welcome it.
Okay, Mrs. Shockley.
No, I feel the same as Mr. LeBlanc.
And Ms. Ludwig? Okay, fine, excellent. After public comment, I'll call for a vote on the motion or the motion as amended. And I do want to note that since we have only four voting members, a vote of two to two will defeat a motion or a motion as amended. So it's possible that we could end up with no budget this evening to move forward. That means no third referendum. So we have to carefully think about the decisions that we're making this evening. So Mr. Wazika, I would like you to please present your recommended operating budget for 2021. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm not going to go crazy on this and spend a lot of time. This is the third bite at the apple. I do want to begin, though, and just have a little explanation as to why the agenda item two, A and B, was set up the way it was. To be able to have a budget and an approval on the budget, we had two options. Either the council could approve it based on forty-five dash two dash three point two, or it would be approved with the voter initiative out to the public. For a voter initiative to take place, we would have to be able to have a vote safely. With the governor eliminating the restrictions on the pause and opening up meetings, we have no... Can I put this? There's no way that we cannot safely have a public vote on this. We've had to... There's nothing that prevents us from having that. So because of that, option A, which is the council voting on this, is eliminated. You can't do it. So there is no determining whether or not you can. On the same token, if those restrictions were still in place or stronger and we couldn't have a vote, a public vote, the only way that this council would be able to actually change this budget and put a budget would be to take the initiative and vote for it based on forty-five dash two dash three point two, which is a general law that was changed during the late spring, early summer by the legislators. It's based on House Bill eighty fifteen, and it was done to eliminate. But because of the fact that we've already done two safely, there's no way to do that. So it was one or the other based on the current condition. There was no option for the council to make a decision. It was based on what was going on. So that's why it was covered the way it was. It wasn't done to try to take away the vote or change anything. It was done to be able to give a way to be able to actually pass a budget if either situation was occurring. And because of the way it is, it has to go out to the public for a vote. It cannot be done by the council. So I want to get that straightened out. So what I've done is my budget is all... This one is based on the original zero increase budget. I'm recommending an additional $225,000. I've sent these information out to everyone today, and it's dealing with the... An increase, a salary increase for all the non-union, about thirty or so non-union employees that amounts to about $87,000. And I've also got four new positions that are scratched at. Four positions, three of which are simply bringing back positions that were eliminated in the past. These are not new positions. The one new position is the Economic Development Specialist, which I sent out the specs on that job to everyone today as well. I'm looking at a total cost of that for a year would be about $310,394. What I've done is we've got, by the time this would be, this budget, if moving forward and is approved, there would be about a five-month period. That comes down to... Let me just have my numbers in front of me. That would be $129,331 for the five months of those four positions. So that and the $87,000, that's where I come up with the $225,000 in our budget. I'm also, after looking at the school department's budget and going through all of their, I am proposing an increase for the school department of $1.2 million. I know they were looking for a minimum of 1.6. They had some additional funds come in. I can't, in all good conscience, put the whole 1.5, 1.6 out there. Your council, as you're well aware, has every ability to increase that above and beyond what I'm recommending. The 1.2 plus the $480,000 that we were advised about for the transportation reduction is about a $1.7 million more than what was anticipated. So that's where I'm going with that. What that does, if you look at the additional paperwork that I've sent you on this, you are looking at... Let me just get it in front of me. That would amount to a 1.98% levy increase over the current zero increase. It's a new tax rate of about 38 cents, give or take, depending on how the final numbers roll out. It amounts to, on a $300,000 a year house, about $112 a year, or about $28.13 a quarter is where that comes down to. If, in fact, this budget changes and you put in that additional money, you will receive tomorrow... I will update all of the line items in the zero-based budget. Get that, and that'll be posted. I didn't want to go through and spend all that time updating all those line items if, in fact, this doesn't go forward. So I'm waiting until then to give you that updated. You also have the projected resolution. I gave that to everyone as well in reference to what would need to be approved with the numbers based on the 1.425 increase that I'm proposing over the existing zero increase budget. That's it, short and sweet.
Okay. To get the discussion started, I'm going to make a motion to approve the interim town manager's recommended capital and operating budget for 2021 with a recommended budget for the school of 1.2 million and a recommended increased budget for the town of $229,300. Is that correct, Mr. Wazika?
It is $225,000. And I also neglected to mention the $200,000 in the capital revolving. That is the capital budget, my recommended capital, the $200,000 that's in there at this point.
Okay, so you're asking for $225,000 plus $200,000 for the capital.
Well, the capital is already in the budget. That was part of the original.
That's right, it's already in the budget, okay. So your recommended budget is 1.2 million for the school and $225,000 for the town.
Correct.
Make a motion to approve his recommended budget. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Ludwig. Is there any discussion? I'll start with Ms. Ludwig, our council vice president.
Thank you. Okay, so just for those persons that are on the call with us, I just want to do a recap so that we are all on the same page here. So, Mr. Wazika, on the town side, we've had multiple resignations. Can you just confirm what you're hearing on the town side? And when is the last time the employees received a raise or anything of that nature? Can you just comment a little bit on that?
It's been, well, it's been over three years since any non-union employee has received a raise, with the exception of there are... There aren't yearly step raises in there. There's this five-year period, ten-year period. So there are a couple of step raises that they get, but not many people have received that over the last three years. Most of them are already at maximum. They were at the maximum amount because they've been here for so long. But there were a couple of lower level that did have a minor increase over the past three years. But thirty-plus employees overall have not received a raise in over three years. I lose people in the exit interview. Biggest, one of the biggest things is the salary range. The salary range that we're paying is below... I'm losing my finance director, and that's not the main reason, but it's one of the reasons that John's going. And I can't even begin to compete with what else is out there. I'm not trying to bring us up to the top. I'm just trying to be able to do something to try to stem the flow of the losses that we're facing over here. I've lost tax assessors. We've lost three or four tax assessors over the last couple of years. This is the second finance director since I've been interim town manager that's left. Could be me, I doubt it, but it could be. And it just, we're not paying, we're not paying the salaries. There are people who are dedicated, they're putting in the time. Same thing with these positions. I have the tax assessor who's still sitting out here right now working. Stephanie In, my executive assistant, is still here working. Their salary, they're not overtime. They're here, they're hours upon hours every day, working. This is what they do. And I can't afford to lose them. We can't afford to lose them. The town can't afford to lose the institutional knowledge, the same as Mr. Levis. He's in the same boat. He can't afford to lose the people he's losing. You know, this is all part of what's going on. And if you keep giving me zero on the salaries, it's going to keep happening, and I can't stop it.
Thank you. I have one other question, and then I can pass it back. On the school side, so you are suggesting a $1.2 million increase. And several weeks ago, we got together with the school committee superintendent and the finance manager. And they had originally asked for, I believe it was 1.9. So can we just make sure that we're all on the same page again here? And I'm sorry if I'm repeating this for some people. The difference, the substantial difference between that original number and this number, can you just comment on the... I believe there was some sort of, I don't know if it's half a million dollars, $400,000. It was a very large expense that we just found out approximately a week ago that we would not have to incur from the state side. Can you just talk about that? Because that's a big chunk of the difference here, correct?
Correct. Ms. Levis, correct me if I'm wrong on what I'm about to say.
Excuse me, why don't we just let Mr. Levis begin? Mr. Levis?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Dixon. So what... If you remember when we met, we were looking at as a minimum of 1.5, and there was many comments made about 1.5, and we're not bringing back sports, we're not bringing back activities, we're not bringing back... We have a dire need for vehicles. I remember, you know, Mr. Cody talking about that. And we haven't purchased our Chromebooks that we typically do in a cycle. And so we had an increase in our statewide transportation that was significant. We had budgeted $400,000, $500,000, and the state had said that we should expect about 1.2, 1.1 million this year, which wasn't budgeted for. So Ms. Mangiari, who's unable to attend tonight, because obviously she's much more articulate about the budget than I could ever be. But what she did is a last-ditch effort. She reached out to statewide transportation, said, you know, this is, you know, I'm paraphrasing here, but basically sold them, "We're going to go out and renegotiate", knowing that they couldn't afford to lose. But so they reduced it, and I have it written down here. They reduced it by approximately $483,000. So all we did was we shifted those expenses over. And now, you know, we're able to, based on the modified schedules and teams that we think will be running the rest of the year for sports. We presented this to the school committee at our last meeting. We're able to put forward, shift those expenses over, and now cover those. We also were able to bring back extracurricular clubs that were permitted to run due to COVID. Some clubs and activities are just not going to run. We also were able to, and again, we presented this, the school committee voted on it. We're able to go forward. We'll need to come before you for your approval, but we only had two vehicles that were able to plow in this last snowstorm, two vehicles, because two other ones broke down. So we're able to go forward with approximately a $35,000 a year lease. That'll get us five, it's a five-year lease. We have to get approval from the council. And we also talked about watching between January and March, watching our other expenses. But if we can maintain, you know, maintain those expenses and not have any unexpected costs, we might come forward and look at the Chromebook lease, because most of our, many of our prices now are six years old, but they're beyond their life expectancy. So all we did was we shift over expenses so that we could come forward. Again, we were the only district in the state not offering sports, not offering activities. National Honor Society, we had brought back. So it was no, you know, that's the whole thing, is that we didn't, we were able to bring back what, you know, these sports that we thought are so important to this community. We heard that. We heard that at our last, I believe, at our joint meeting, that conversation. It was a question that one of, somebody asked about. So you're going to ask for, you know, one point, you could, you know, ask for 1.5, but you would have still, I think Mr. Murray might have said that, I'm not sure. But we're still not bringing back sports. We're still not bringing back clubs, other activities. We're still not going to be able to get those vehicles that we desperately need. So that's what happened. We were able to get a reduction in one expenditure, and we shifted that over so we could bring back those other activities. You know, we all know how important those are, not just the academics. So I hope that explains your question.
Yes, thank you. That was a huge chunk. I'll pass it back in for questions from the rest of the council. Thank you.
And Philip Blank?
This is a question from Mr. Levis, if he doesn't mind discussing it. But I know the town manager has suggested 1.2 million. Based off of the school committee meetings that I've attended, there were also significant COVID-related costs that have been discussed. Could you just touch a little bit upon those costs? And if this 1.2 will help you fund those costs?
So I... And guide me if I don't answer your question. So the reason we originally asked for 1.9, and I think, you know, in my conversations with many of the council members and, you know, publicly, we've always been consistent with our ask. What the reason that we were able to adjust to the 1.5 was because we're using our surplus, how the town used surplus to purchase vehicles, I believe. And maybe you did some other things, one-time purchases. Ms. Mangiari consistently said we should only use surplus for one-time expenditures, because there is no town budget, because we didn't have a state budget. The only additional funds that we've received at all, so we've received these reductions we've been operating on, and we received about $720,000 from the federal government that we could use towards, only towards COVID-related. So what we did is, if we were to get the 1.5, we could not, we could take our surplus out of operations and use that to fund COVID expenditures. If we got the 1.2, we're still going to come to the town and ask for some support for COVID expenditures. But I think the other issue with the 1.2 is that, and I don't want to get too far ahead, but, you know, we would have addressed this in our joint meeting, but we will next week at the 30th. You'll see how that'll impact FY '22. And I know we've all talked, I want to be positive. I also want to be realistic. And the challenge will be that we're going to be, even the reduction from the 1.9 originally down to 1.2 is really going to set us up for failure. I know some people think, maybe members of the community think, we can just lay off teachers, we can just make all these reductions. But we continue to do that. We still have to function. We still have to provide programs. We have to provide, you know, certain classes. And it's going to be hard to keep positive. So I, you know, with all due respect to Mr. Wazika, I know there was a conversation with, I spoke with Ms. Mangiari before I left to come home. And at that time, I believe, and I don't want to put words in people's mouth, but there were still conversations about what, I had no idea what this number was going to be presented tonight. So it's going to put us in a position, we're going to have to still come back to the town for funds for this year. But I'm really concerned about FY '22, because you know that we can only ask for a certain percentage. So it automatically puts us in a hole. We had figured if we got the 1.5, we're starting off, and we made some assumptions, like level state aid, we're starting off with an $800,000 deficit next year, which isn't too bad, considering everything we went through. And we'll talk more about that next week. So, but that's where, how we agreed, I say we agree. You know, the conversation with Ms. Mangiari and the public conversations we've had where we could survive on that 1.5, because we'll just pull out the, our surplus, and we'll use it for one-time expenditures, COVID-related expenses. You know, we have some funds that we're actually taking from the town that we're going to use for our ventilation HVAC systems. But we have much more work that needs to be done. And so I hope I answered your question.
I greatly appreciate the insight. I have two more questions. I believe this one is for Mr. Wazika and Mr. Arnett. Whenever you discuss a budget, you also like to see actuals to kind of know where we currently stand. I don't know if you guys can speak to how we're currently doing from a budget to actual, a level-funded budget to actual standpoint? And if we really need the 225, I understand the raises, totally get that. But the four positions, the three replacements and the one new one, I didn't know if we could maybe push those out maybe a month or two? Because if you push it out two months, you could potentially save $50,000. And I know it's not a ton of money, but at least it's some savings. But I don't know if you guys can speak to the budget to actual where we currently stand?
I will let John speak to that one. Pushing it back further, Mr. LeBlanc, the more months we save the 25, the more money we've got to put in next year to make that a full-time position. So if we take out seven months now, which would be about $160,000, we've got to fund that additional next year. We take out two more months, now we're up to $210,000 that we've got to fund as part of these four positions. So the longer we go in, the more money we're going to need next year to bring them up to full pay or full year salary. So there is a trade-off on that if we do it. John, you can go on the other aspect, please.
I was just looking at the numbers today, and obviously there's a lot of... The changeover with the new system is just verifying that some of these accounts... I find some accounts every once in a while that seem to be hitting the wrong ones. But overall, looking through the different departments, we're hitting around that 50%. Just, and it's actually tracking a little bit higher than 50 right now. But at the same time, what I'm saying a little bit, we're talking like 50 to 51, 50 to 52. We're not talking up at 55, 60%. We're not talking as the end of the years come around, we should be sitting around at a halfway point. So we're getting there. It's tight, and it's going to have to be reviewed significantly as we get closer and closer to the end of the fiscal year. But that's what we're tracking right now. As far as specific departments, off the top of my head, I can't tell you where some of them are versus other ones, but it's basically right at that 50% mark, where we were expecting it.
Great, I appreciate it. That's all I have for now.
I did speak with Mr. Wazika this morning about providing regular financial reporting to the council. And that is certainly something that he is very agreeable to. And I know that all the council members would like that, too. They're working their way through a new software package, and as soon as they can get that set, they will be able to generate these reports very easily for us. And I know that's of interest to you. In fact, Mr. Wazika, Mr. Arnett, and a couple of the members of the staff are going to be in this weekend to work on the system to make sure, as Mr. Arnett departs, that they are ready to continue working with the system and to produce the kind of reports that are needed. So the system is new. They're working out the kinks. And I believe that very shortly we'll be able to provide all the kind of financial reporting that the council would require to make informed decisions. Okay? Let me see. Oh, question. COVID, last council did agree in principle to looking into providing money from fund balance to help support types of COVID-related expenses. So I know that this really needs to be brought before our new council, but it is a possibility to provide some relief for COVID expenses to the Coventry Public Schools for that type of expense from our fund balance that would not go to their maintenance of effort, but it would be available to them. Mrs. Shockley, your comments, please.
Thank you very much. So my question is, I know there are certain things that we, the school, was able to pay for this year from outside sources. What I wonder with the 1.2 million is... Is that, is anything cut from the budget using that 1.2 million? That's an annual expense. So something that's going to come back into the '21, '22 budget?
The way we passed the budget was approved by the school committee that night was everything put together. We made it, you know, using our 1.5. So I honestly, I can't tell you, there's too many variables to know what might be cut next year, if that's what you're asking. I think what's crucial is realizing how the 1.2 does impact maintenance of effort moving forward. And so it's a double-edged sword in a way, because, I don't know if that's a proper term, I'll strike that comment. But so what it's going to do is impact, in terms of our projection that we made for FY '22, it's going to reduce the amount of money that we can receive from the town. Right? And so by, so it impacts us this year, but it's going to impact us also next year. So we have to look and see what those cuts are. But there's, but I can't tell you what they would be because there's too many variables. We have to look at, you know, where will we get savings elsewhere? But I think what's important is that it doesn't... We have to find a spot. And I know it's not going to happen over one year, but where we provide some stability for the budget process. And again, because we have been level-funded in the past, and, you know, when the state had given us additional funds, and I know this is old news for many people, but the recommendation was for the towns to continue. We're in such a situation now that, you know, we could be in a spot where, no matter what, like we're looking at, you know, like I said, right now, $800,000 shortfall. So that would automatically give us 1.1 million, but we don't know where else we're going to have shortfalls. One of the things that we're experiencing this year is we don't know how much our energy costs are going to increase because we're running systems differently. We were told by our HVAC consultant that we may double our electric bills in certain buildings because of, you know, keeping the windows open to a certain degree, but also how we're running our systems. So there's so many moving parts and variables, you know? So the answer is, obviously, we'll have to look at cuts. But where do you cut? So the answer is, obviously, we'll have to look at cuts, but where do you cut? That's the issue. I know people say just cut, but if you go into our classrooms, you'll see our class size for the most part, unless there's special classes or like AP are maxed out. And if we lose a hundred kids, it doesn't mean we can just reduce it by the same amount of teachers. No, doesn't mean we can lose four teachers because of it because we have seven buildings and thirteen grades, fourteen grades when you look at our transition program. So it's not an easy answer. I'm not trying to skirt the answer, but I can't tell you now where the cuts will be. But I think it 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 doesn't help us provide this stability. And I think that's why we looked at that one point five million because we know we can now use that surplus for COVID related expenses and not have to come to the town for funds. So while the willingness of the council or the previous council and this council to help us will help us this year, it's not going to help us next year.
And and you gave us a percentage with the one point two. And I believe last meeting we talked about this, you gave us what the percentage of levy would be for one point nine. Do you know what it might be for one point five?
It will be two point three nine percent.
You have.
That would be a forty six cent increase, give or take, on the tax rate, and it would be about a hundred and thirty six dollars a year for the homeowner with a three hundred thousand dollar house. So that's the number we're looking at.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Patino, would you like to add any comments this evening?
Um, the only thing I would like to add is just to reiterate to what Mr. Levis said about what will happen next year. One point two, we can probably limp along and get through this year, but obviously the one point two as a starting point for our maintenance of effort next year is going to is going to kill us. We will not be able to, we will have massive cuts. We will be looking at at least a one point one million deficit, if not more, depending on, you know, whatever what else may happen. And to try to cut one point one million out of our budget next year means, you know, people, teachers, which means programs, which means devastation to the schools, as you well know. So that's really all I have to say about the matter.
Thank you. Any other comments by members of the council? Okay, I have, of course, as all of you have received emails and telephone calls, very extensive, long telephone calls, in fact, about our situation. So I'd just like to make a few comments before I open it up to public comment. I understand that the need that the school committee has presented of one point five and even one point eight. And I understand that if that one point five is not approved, then they will have a lower maintenance of effort that will limit their ask for their twenty one, twenty two budget. So a vote against one point five has consequences which are immediate as we simultaneously must start deliberating on the twenty one, twenty two budget. But right now, we truly do not have a way to measure what voters in Coventry can really afford to pay to support the twenty twenty one budget, know what they are willing to pay. We can use collection rates as an indicator, and we know that our collection rate has been holding steady compared to last year. We also know the unemployment rate in Coventry is six point two percent based on November numbers. Yet these two measures do not say it all. This is this is what we know. I know for a fact that there are people in our community who can afford to pay for a tax increase, but for whatever reason, they choose not to do so. And I also know there are people in our community who have a very strong belief in the importance of education and will do whatever it takes to support the budget, even if they have very limited means. I do know that we are in a global pandemic with its own uncertainties. There is civil unrest in many parts of the United States. There is economic depression for many people right here in our community, and there is also a level of social depression due to limitations on meetings and travel. So it's not the best of times. We council members do have a responsibility for the appropriation of money and for the levy of taxes and assessments. We have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure the financial stability of our town and our school system. Unfortunately, we do not have a perfect world in which everyone will be happy or approve of our disactions. I'm looking for a middle ground in which we can provide for basic services and programs for both the school and the town side with a reasonable expectation that the voters will approve the referendum based on the manager's recommended budget. A recommended budget of one point nine eight percent levy seems to be the max at which the people who have contacted me are willing to accept, and many of them always start with one percent is all I want. But, you know, after conversations, they'll consider two percent. I believe that anything over two percent is not a reasonable expectation. It breaks my heart to say this because I want to support education to the full extent that the school has asked us for, but I do not have a reasonable expectation that the the townspeople will accept a budget over what is the manager's recommended budget. So I'm going to support the manager's recommended budget of one point two million for the public schools and two hundred twenty five thousand for the town. We are of course open for amendments from any member of the council if you wish to do so. Unless I hear something more from members of the council, I will open it up to public comment. Mr. Shockley.
If we had an amendment after public comment, would we be able to put it forward at that time?
Of course.
Can I also ask, just because I want to confirm this, Mr. Wazika, the performance audit is something that we are intending to pay for outside of this budget. Am I correct?
Correct. We have options outside. We've had some some one time funds come in from a couple of projects that have come to fruition. They would be available, they weren't part of the original budget, and they would be there also looking at the same thing as part of for some of the COVID expenses on the school side and not lock that in as an MOA. And that's why there is funds available there as well. The council can look at and 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 put out there for those for those one time uses and not make them part of the reoccurring MOA to cover one time costs, not not to reduce a structural deficit in our budget. So that's so it is there to do that.
Great, I appreciate that. And can I also make a comment? Just that this budget that Mr. Wazika is presenting with the additional funds for the school for one point five million was actually put together by finance experts. We are losing Mr. Arnett and Ms. Mangriely, both at the same time as we go into the next budget cycle. And it does concern me that we are planning on getting a new town manager, a new finance director for the town, a new finance director for the school, and underfunding our school programs at the same time. So I do find it very concerning just because of the expertise that has gone into making this budget that I fear we may be lacking because we will not have anyone who has an understanding of the town's budget. And as we go into the performance audit, which hopefully will really be able to assist us, if not in the twenty twenty two budget, then in our twenty two, twenty three. So I just wanted to state that.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. Any other comments by members of the council? Mr. Wazika, would you please open public comment for us?
I will. If anyone is interested in speaking, please raise your hand, raise your hand, and I will bring you in. We have sixty seven attendees. I have no hands. Excuse me, I have one. I have one.
Welcome, please state your name and address.
All right. Stephen, full name, spell your last name, and state your address, please. He's got an older version of Zoom, and he may be having an issue. Stephen going once, going twice, three times. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please raise your hand. I see none. Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Public comment is now closed. We will continue discussion by the council. Are there any other comments that any council member would like to add at this point? Ms. Ludwig.
Thank you, President Dixon. So I just have a few general comments. So firstly, thank you to those who put the the information in front of us. This is consistent with what I've talked about with constituents in District Two, stating very similar to President Dixon's comments earlier, that the numbers that they think they can personally take on are are basically in alignment with what is being put forward. I think there is, I think there is a lot going on in people's lives, and it's not just the pandemic, it's everything, right? So President Dixon noted a number of items that are weighing on people. I think this is something that I would personally support. This makes sense to me, and I'm in favor of what has been put forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ludwig. Mr. LeBlanc, comments?
I agree with that sentiment. I understand that the schools need more at this time, but I also understand that there's a global pandemic. Sewer rates just increased for sewer usage fees. Sewer assessments just hit constituents in my district. And the Congress just passed additional stimulus that we so desperately need, or a lot of, I should say, a lot of Americans so desperately need. So while I understand the schools do need more money, I do fully support the one point nine eight percent increase.
Thank you. Mrs.
I actually would like to put forth, based on the circumstances that the town is currently in, having the one point five million in the school budget. My thought is that as we move out of this pandemic, as we move forward, we want our town to continue to work for us. We don't want to lose services and be paying the same amount of money in taxes. We don't want to lose children in our local school system. And as every year, we keep running into the same fight, I'm really concerned that the students themselves are making a choice that they would rather not fight that fight on an annual basis. I think that you do get to a point where there is no fat to trim. People often say, there's always something. I've lived in this town for four years, and we've never passed the budget presented to us. We've never level funded, but we have never taken the budget put forth by our financial experts who we hired and passed that budget. We've always taken that budget and said, trim the fat. And it's been trimmed for just the four years that I've been here. And I know that level funding has happened in the schools before that. So in my mind, the fat has been trimmed, and we need to present the school with the one point five million dollars raises for our local non-union after three years of not having raises, I think seems perfectly reasonable, and assistance for the people who are already working for the town and need that extra aid also, I think, sounds manageable. When you look at two percent or one point nine percent compared to two point three nine percent, I do think the number is going to put people off. I do think they're going to see a number over two percent, and some people will be turned off. But I do think a lot of other people would like us to start out our next budget cycle where the school can move forward and the town can move forward because that's what we're looking to do. And as we go into the performance audit with new financial experts, we can keep progressing as opposed to have been cut off at the knees one more time. So I would look to present the additional three hundred thousand dollars to the school for a one point five million dollar budget for the school and a two hundred twenty five thousand dollar budget for the town.
So I believe that your amendment is to make an amendment to the main motion to increase the manager manager's recommended budget to include one point five million for the school. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there a second for that amendment? Here we know second, that amendment fails. Thank you for your recommendation. Well, well said, Mrs. Shockley. Are we ready for the vote on the manager's recommended budget? Mrs. Ludwig suggests, Mr. LeBlanc? Okay, ready for the vote? Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please read the motion?
I'm new. Council approval of capital budget and operating budget for the fiscal year twenty 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 one and selection of the method for the financial adoption of the same.
Okay, I believe that we need to vote on a motion that has the number within it. So, Mr. Wazika, would you please read the number one more time for us so that it is clear what we are voting for?
We are increasing the original budget. The the numbers are as follows. Section one, the twenty nine million, five hundred thirty five thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars will be appropriated from tax revenues, federal and state aid, and other revenues for the operation of the municipal government as set forth in Exhibit A, which is attached. Section two, that forty eight million, two hundred seventy eight thousand, five hundred and eighty nine dollars be appropriated from the from tax revenue for the operation of the school department. That includes the increase of the one point two million dollars. With forty eight million, two hundred and seventy eight thousand, five hundred and eighty nine dollars being the maintenance of effort, these funds shall supplement state aid to the education grants and other school revenues, provide an operating budget of seventy four million, three fifty seven, eight twenty. That five million, one hundred and ninety dollars and one hundred, one hundred and ninety thousand, sixty nine dollars in tax revenues, interest earnings, and state aid will be appropriated for the retirement of principal and interest on the outstanding bond and indebtedness. And section four, that two hundred thousand be appropriated for the capital improvements. Section five, that the town clerk and interim town manager are hereby authorized and directed to place a single question upon the ballot for a financial town meeting on January nineteenth, twenty twenty one, and all day referendum, January twenty first, twenty twenty one, in accordance with chapter, section eight point one eight, requesting approval of the foregoing and one single ballot question to approve or reject, which checks which question shall include an authorization to levy tax in accordance with Title forty five, Chapter five, along with the quarterly payments due, the dates thereof, and all interest and penalties to be levied and collected thereon, if such payments are late, and to take any other action to properly place the budget before the voters in appropriate form in accordance with law. The same shall be presented, noticed, and warned in accordance with Chapter forty five, Title forty five, Chapter three of the General Laws of Rhode Island, passed and adopted this twenty first day of December, twenty twenty.
Okay, are we ready for the vote, council members? Roll call vote, please.
Ian Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc? Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Thank you. The vote is four to zero, I'm sorry, four. And the motion passes. Thank you very much. I appreciate the comments of all the members of the council, and we'll move forward. Mr. Yes.
I do notice someone does have their hand up. I don't know if people are still allowed to comment, even though we have moved forward.
We certainly can entertain another comment. Mr. Wazika.
Karen, would you please state your full name, spell your last name, and give your address, please, for the record?
Yes, thank you. Karen Dilone, twenty Regalwood Drive, Coventry. My last name D I L O N E. I apologize. I was trying to raise my hand during the public comment, and my phone was freezing. So I don't know if this is still allowed, but I'd like to ask a question or for clarification. I know that there is at least one department in the town that is working, physically working one week and then off the second week, but still getting paid by the town. Is that, is that my understanding correct versus that off week being unemployment?
Dave, can I answer? It's, no, they are. We, it's, it's part of the COVID protection. We had a situation in our town with a with a contract with our municipal employees that mandated from day one, when an emergency declaration is been signed by the governor, that they go on time in one half for every minute they work. That amounted to an additional cost to this town of fifty thousand dollars a week, minimal. So their overtime rates, everything they do would go up by fifty percent. I, in in conjunction with that and that clause, we would have already spent well over another million dollars in salary. Because we're a municipality laying off people, we'd still be paying two thirds of the layoff cost and still paying the people. On top of, I needed to ensure that we had a continuity of business operations, and by doing and splitting the people up, I guarantee that if one group gets sick, I've got the other group that can continue to work and operate and provide. other group that can continue to work and operate and provide functionality for the town. So yes, part of the people, that's not every department. There are some, there are some departments, Town Hall, they're working straight through. All this, I am projecting by January 1st that everybody will be back in full. The numbers are dropping again, and because of that, I will be bringing them all back in, and the reduction in the risk will be lower. And they'll be working. But yes, they do. And it's been going on since March, since the governor signed it. And we have corrected that deficiency in the proposed contract that we're in negotiations with right now. But it was something that was in there, something I had to deal with. And it worked for best, because a lot of communities have followed that, that trend, and they have also done half on, half off to ensure continuity of business operations. So it was all part of what we needed to do.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I wasn't sure if it would have been beneficial to go on in that off week on unemployment and possibly save in payroll taxes, but I thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
And, and Mr. Levis, for your team, I applaud everything that they are doing on a daily basis. You know, they are working every day. They're there every day. The teachers are going above and beyond. Your elementary school teachers are posting Christmas stories on Zoom. Your middle school gym teachers are dancing for the kids on weekends. And I'm getting emails from my son's teachers on nights and Saturday mornings and Sunday mornings. It is, it is relentless, nonstop work for them, and I applaud everything they're doing. And to have a budget, anything less than what you ask for, I think is a complete and utter disgrace. And I just, I just, I hope that this budget is passed, so you can at least manage to keep your head somewhere above water.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our caller made a very important statement, and that is, I hope this budget is passed. When I made my opening statements, I said that I have a reasonable expectation that if we kept the increase to 2% or lower, that we would have a reasonable expectation. Otherwise, we would be back to level funded, and we would be at a position where nothing would be sustainable, even for the town or for the govern, or for the schools. So I have also asked, and I have an expectation, that the school and the town leadership will immediately convene on December 29th to begin a dialogue of how we may both help each other to provide what is needed to restore our town and our public schools' image in the community, so that we can increase support for what is above the bare basic minimum to survive, knowing benefits through prolonged sustenance-only levels of support. I think every member of the council has expressed that feeling. We need everyone to come out to vote, and we need to get a support for this budget. Otherwise, this is our last try at it. Otherwise, we will be at level funded, and no one will be a winner in that scenario. So I do thank you all for your comments and for your discussion this evening. Mr. Wazika, do we now need to approve a resolution? I believe you did read the resolution, but do we need to formally approve the resolution?
I thought you did. I thought you voted on that.
We're okay with that. Okay. I had asked for a vote on the motion, and we got the resolution. So we're all set? Every, every I is dotted, every T is crossed?
Mr. DeAcquistino is shaking his head in affirmation?
Yes.
But we do have one more person who's got his hand, his hand raised. I don't know if you want to bring him in. You did end public comment, but there is one more person.
I would be very happy to hear public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I will bring the person in. Stephen, please state your full name, spell your last name, and state your address, please, for the record. Stephen.
He might just have to unmute himself.
He's just on mute this time.
Yeah, yeah.
Steve, can you hear me? Mr. Bosque? Mrs. Dixon going once, going twice, three times. Sorry.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. For a moment, I thought we wanted to stay a little bit. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shockley. Roll call vote, please.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:55. I would like to wish you all a very happy and joyful holiday. The council will be back on December 28th for a meeting to discuss the 2122 budget. So we hope you'll all be here to join us, and we especially hope that we will have many people joining in on our Zoom meeting. Thank you so much, and good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.